It will.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Time to begin our planning commission agenda for tonight, June the 8th. Our first item will be the invocation, and the flag salute will be led by Commissioner Davis. Please stand.
For Heavenly Father, we ask you humbly this evening to give us the guidance that we need to do the business of the city of Yukon. We ask that you lay your protective arms on our forces in harm's way, men and women that put their lives on the lives, on the line force every day, and also for the, our policemen and firemen that are putting their lives on the line force every day. Lord guide them and protect them and keep them safe. Be with us this evening. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Rest flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hatley?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Item one is the approval of the minutes of May 11th, 2015 meeting. Do we have a motion, or does anybody have corrections or additions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve a motion. Do we have a second?
Uh, question?
Yes, sir.
On the vote of item one, is the, are the eyes correct?
What? Kathy, do you, can you answer that question for him?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Did we have, the vote says four to nothing, and there's five eyes.
Oh, I have my straw on there.
Can we make a, can we pin and ink that one?
So we'll make that one correction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a second? What second with the correction? Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I mean, yes. Baker? Any further corrections or comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Item two is the visitor section. If there's anyone here that's, would like to address the commission about a non-agended item, please step forward and do so at this time. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by ally, Allen Engineering Services for a rezone from A Agricultural District to R3 Multifamily Residential District at Yukon Hills, a part of, part of Section 21 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Maridian Canadian County. We have several meets and bounds. It contains 6.70 acres, and this piece of ground is more or less behind the Arvis Spank and the Taco Bell Restaurant and the Arvis Plaza. This piece of ground that lays back there, it's vacant between that and the housing districts. So you might have further clarification than that. Is that sufficient, Mr. Attorney?
That'll work, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one here from Allen? Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Allen with Allen Engineering. Mr. Brett Johnson's here with Overland Properties.
Can you give your address, sir?
I'm sorry, 1601 Southwest 89th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
Mr. Brett Johnson with Overland Properties is here also to answer any questions. We're planning on developing a 60-unit senior living center. I think, Mr. Johnson, if you want to hear a brief description of the property, you can probably do that better than I can.
Well, we'll get to that. We're on the rezone right now.
Okay.
Commissioners, does anybody have a question on the rezoning?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of interest, staff has been working with the applicant as well as Mr. Allen on this issue. We have worked diligently on it. We're also requiring them to have a overlay district to address issues that we had or would have in the future, or will have in the future, so.
So basically, what we're saying here, if we were to pass this rezoning, it would be subject to the passage of the PUD and acceptance by the city council of the same.
That is correct.
And if either the city council does not accept that, they have final say, then the rezoning would not be in effect. Is that correct?
The city council will act upon whatever you approve tonight, or may approve.
Or disapprove.
Yes.
It goes, if we vote either way, it goes to the city council. So on the rezoning, we have to get the property rezoned before we can lay the PUD over, overlay it.
That's correct.
Okay. Have we got everything covered on that, Mr. Attorney? You think?
Yep, I think so.
Okay.
One point of interest, it's nine units per acre. We're not ran any variances on that, so I just want to bring that up to you while we're talking about it.
Is that where, what?
There would be no variances on the nine units per acre.
Nine units per acre. That's more than we allow anyway, isn't it?
No, nine units per acre is what's for.
Is that what we put in several years ago when I was on council? Okay.
And is that part of the rezoning or part of the PUD?
No, I'm just making a point of that.
Okay.
We, we came across apartments wanting to come in before, and they were wanting multi-units per acre, and we did not allow that. Okay, would someone care to read this motion if we're finished visiting about it?
Mr. Chairman, we may have some people that may want.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to discuss the rezoning part of this? May I have anybody at all on the rezone? Okay, someone care to make a motion?
If we get to the right page here, I'll do it. In the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Allen Engineering Services, Inc., on behalf of Overland Properties Group, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that rezoning of the subject property be recommended for approval to the city council, along with the proposed PUD overlay, which will be contingent upon approval of the underlying zoning district by council. And.
I believe that should be the second, um, under draft motions, the first paragraph should be stricken, and the motion should be the second paragraph, which would move approval of the rezoning, and then the second, or the last paragraph, which moves approval of the PUD overlay.
So the first paragraph under draft motion, we're going to strike?
Strike that.
Okay.
So you'll have to start reading where it says "or."
There's no "or" either, is there?
That paragraph under "or"?
Yes.
But not "or," okay.
No, it's not "or," no.
In the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Allen Engineering Services, on behalf of Overland Properties Group, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that rezoning of the subject property be recommended for approval to the city council and, in the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Allen Engineering Services, Inc., on behalf of Overland Properties Group, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that the PUD overlay be recommended for approval to the city council contingent upon approval of the underlying zoning district by council.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is voting on the rezoning only. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. Item four, to hear a request by Allen Engineering Services for consideration of a planned unit development design statement for their, for residents at Yukon Hills, A, part of Section 21 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of Indian Maridian Canadian County. And once again, we go through the meets and, meets and bounds of this piece of ground, and still contains 6.70 acres more or less behind Arvis Plaza. Now you can speak to that part of it.
Charles Allen with Allen Engineering, 1601 Southwest 89th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. We're proposing 60 senior living units on 6.7 acres. The developer, Brett Johnson's here with Overland Properties. I wanted to make a point that that's properties plural.
Property.
Sorry, property, not plural properties. Got it a couple times, just so when the motion's read, it's maybe corrected and then. Happy to answer any questions. I think we've had some people here in the audience and.
So have you gone over the PUD and worked with staff on what they're?
Yes, we have. I think we're pretty much in agreement with everything that they've.
Pretty much?
Pretty much, all.
Okay.
Well, I had 26 items, I think, there, so kind of embarrassed that we have that many, but.
I, uh.
Most of them, I think, are wording issues.
Yes, wording, most of it. I'd like to know, uh, what, uh, what do you call a senior housing? What is senior housing?
I think I'll let Mr. Johnson speak to that if you don't mind.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brett Johnson. I'm senior partner with Overland Property Group. And I noticed it did say properties in the motion, so we've discussed that with Kathy. I don't know if you guys need to make that change. 5345 West 151st Terrace in Leewood, Kansas, right outside of Kansas City. Senior housing has a lot of different categories. You'll hear a lot of different acronyms. This particular property will be independent living, or IL. There's also AL, assisted living. There's skilled nursing facilities, which are SNFs, and then you have memory care. This property is, in its simplest form, apartments that are age-restricted. The age restriction on these will be 62 and better, so if you are younger than that, you would need to be married to someone who has that apartment. So this property is a congregate facility. It's all under one roof. These are not multifamily, typical garden-style apartments. As you, as you see on, I believe, one of the site plans that might be in your packet, it's a, basically a T-shaped building, two stories, under the 35-foot restriction. We have developed this before. The same property sits in Kansas City in a couple of different locations, although not this small. We have it at 113 units. We have it at 144. 60 units is much more conducive to what we feel this site merits. So, other than a list of amenities that go along with this independent living, such as, you know, we'll have meal programs that are available, we have a fitness center, we have a storm shelter FEMA-approved, we have an elevator. This will have a little chapel movie theater in it as well. So there's a lot of amenities that you get with this that a typical garden-style apartment wouldn't provide to a senior. What we found in, in all of the properties that we've developed, and we've done a little over 2,000 units in five states, about a third of those are IL, independent living facilities. And we have found that seniors gravitate more towards properties like this versus living in, you know, a maintenance-free garden-style apartment, and for obvious reasons. So, we've looked at Yukon before. When Mr. Grayson Bottom first came into Yukon, we met with him. We looked at a lot of different sites. We will be working through the Section 42 federal tax credits. This is approximately a $9 million development. We'll have about $7 million in federal tax credits that will go towards the equity. And we will have some restrictions on that as well, so. Gave you a lot of info. Go ahead.
Where in here does it, are you going to, I think it should be in here that 62 and above is the age group. It should be stated that. Because we don't want four or five years down the road. Do you sell these, or do you continue to hang on to them?
Great question. Of the 2,000 units plus that we have, we have not sold any. And the main reason behind that is through the Section 42 federal tax credit program that Reagan started in 86, there's what's called a land use restrictive agreement. In Oklahoma, it's 40 years. So that commitment for not only the age restriction, but the income restriction as well, is locked in. So we can't sell it. We can't convert it into multifamily. We can't convert it into a fraternity house. This has to remain an independent living facility for a minimum of 40 years. Now, there's some restrictions over and above that, and be happy to talk with council about how that works. We have no intention of selling it, nor really could we. And you can look at our portfolio and see what we've done in other communities. But the program was established for that very reason, and it was to replace the old government housing that the government or HUD would go in and build, and then basically let fall to pieces. There's a lot of other restrictions that go along with this funding, in that we have to have a certain number of dollars in reserves per unit, which is about $3,500 per unit per year. Those are set up in account that we can't touch, that the state oversees. They audit the property annually. They do physical inspections annually. We're required to also do those. And if we ever step out of line, or the property falls into disrepair, they'll simply replace me.
Do, uh, do you have a manager on site that will be on site?
We do. We have a third-party management company on all of our properties. And these properties have to go through a lot of compliance, and this particular property will have an onsite. In senior housing, we call them executive directors. For apartments, they're apartment managers. This will also have a maintenance person that'll be full-time on staff, and then a part-time leasing agent, which will be full-time through lease-up.
And you know, we have a, a unit like that just down the street from there.
Similar, yeah.
It's a 202 HUD project, not a Williams.
Similar program, but not, not in the same category, Section 42, and no disrespect to the rural 202 program. Section 42 properties are typically much better in terms of how they're maintained, how they're operated, because there's more funding in those properties, Section 42.
Mr. Chair? So, before we get away from this, sections, so there is, there's no provision to convert from 42 to 8. Is that correct? From Section 42 to Section 8, there's no, no conversion clause in, in regulation?
Section 42 housing would permit a Section 8 applicant to apply, but they still have to meet the income requirements. They have to meet the credit background checks.
And the 62-plus?
And the 62-plus. So, uh, one of the nice parts about Section 42 is the rents don't, they're not adjusted based on income. The rents will range from 400 to 750, and that's going to be based on, you know, what's available, one bedrooms or two bedrooms. Section 8 tenants could apply, just as they could at any rental in, in this community or any other. It's whether or not they qualify.
And there's no conversion from 62-plus to 55-plus?
It's a, it's an election that some states offer, and it's less points, so.
No, I mean, after, after it's opened. It's, once it's 62-plus and it's open.
Yeah, we've designated that in the LURA to the state, and I'm glad you brought that up, because part of the timing here falls into that. Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority has an application deadline of July 1st. Prior to that, we must be zoned, and we must have a resolution of support from the city of Yukon. If we don't, the application will not go in, and another community in the state would be able to acquire these credits. There's no guarantee that we'll get these credits, but the way we are positioning the application, scoring items such as 62 and older versus 55 and older play into that. So we have selected a lot of things, including amenities, including our targeting of income, including our rents, that make it score more points to be more competitive.
Mr. Johnson, you might talk to them about who they can have living with them, or who they can't have living with.
That'll be my next question. Can Grandma and Granddad have?
Their kids.
Two grandkids stay with them for three months while Mom and Dad take a vacation?
Right. In an age-restricted tax credit property, you must be 62 or older, or the spouse of someone who qualifies. You cannot have children living with you. If they have a girlfriend or a boyfriend that moves in with them, their income would be applied to the income restriction. So if they overqualify with the addition of that person, they would not be able to live there either. So there will be no children. Obviously, from a marketing perspective, it doesn't behoove us as a company to operate a senior-only facility that allows children. Now, they can visit, but they're not allowed to be a resident there.
What about pets?
Pets are allowed. We do a restriction on that of 25 pounds or less. And most senior facilities, quite honestly, about 40% of those properties that we have have pets. But they have to abide by all local laws and codes. In this one, we, I don't think we have it on the PUD, but in most of our senior properties, and it will probably happen here if it's fairly economical, is to put an off-leash dog park area, which is just a small, little fenced-in area. We also have the little pooper-scooper stands with the bags.
What about smoking?
Smoking is not allowed in any of our properties, including our multifamily.
Are there any, as far as the points? Sometimes local match creates points. Is there any, are there any fee waivers or local match involved in this?
We, we're a for-profit developer, so we would not have any tax abatement, TIF. Although we ask if communities offer that. Obviously, it helps strengthen the success of the property, but in this case.
And you've done TIF projects before, correct?
We have. We've done TIF. We've done rural housing incentive districts, which are a similar version of TIF. We've done tax abatement, but this one would not have any of that.
Yeah, some of these questions I just am asking to get on the record.
Sure.
You understand. Would you, but, you know, you built a lot of things. Would you say this is closer to, like the gardens at Jackson Creek, or more like Stone Post, or, you know, what, what's this like? I don't have a front elevation or anything.
Yeah, and you know, I apologize. Normally, we bring a, a full-blown dog and pony show, but there was not a setup for that here tonight. So, the Gardens at Jackson Creek, which is outside of Kansas City, is a 113-unit, just recently completed, four-story version of this building. We took the elements, the design elements from the elevations, which, in this case, we're doing 80%, I think, is that correct, Mitchell? 80% of the exterior is masonry, which is not doing fluid, the hardy board, so you'll see stone and brick. That building in Independence, Missouri, is basically the sister product to this, in terms of amenities, in terms of how we operate it. You know, the, the design, the footprint of this building will be much smaller, but we are looking at a two and, one and two-bedroom mix of approximately, and this plays into the market study, but we're going with about nine two-bedrooms out of the 60, so predominantly one-bedroom units. And with senior, that's what you'll find. It's, it's usually not an economical, it doesn't make sense to do as many two-bedrooms when you're doing senior.
Did you say you are including a storm shelter?
And it will be FEMA-approved, FEMA-rated storm shelter, subterranean. Take that back. It will not be subterranean. We have it on the first floor, but it is going to be to FEMA code.
So they just walk into it?
Correct.
Is any of this stuff handicapped?
Yes, we have to mean all local codes for that, plus for the state. And if they're not handicap units, they are handicap adaptable. So, and in senior, again, we have, the majority of the time, we're adapting, and most, I think, if not all of these units are roll-in, roll-out showers with grab bars.
About how many parking spaces would you have?
94, which is 1.5 per unit, which is overparked. And we understand that. We, we discussed that with staff. Initially, we came in at 2.0, just because, you know, and we want to maximize and then reduce back. Some communities don't differentiate between multifamily and senior parking. We've had studies done. In fact, for the Gardens at Jackson Creek, we had a study done. We're running about .85 to .9 on our senior communities, because we offer transportation. So we'll have a bus that, you know, will go within a 10-mile radius, you know, with scheduled trips, things like that.
What about lighting outside in the parking lot? Are there going to be tall standards, or will it affect the neighborhood?
20-foot max.
It says 20 feet.
Yes, and that's one of the things that we did address. Light cannot spill onto adjoining properties, so we have talked with them in depth about that.
Okay.
The PUD has a lot of that in there.
And, and honestly, one of the things, and, and we did have a neighborhood meeting. It wasn't required, but we do this. We call them neighborhood interact meetings, where we invite, you know, everybody within, I think it was 300 yards. We went over to Mazzio's and, and had some pizza and, and talked about the property, had a presentation, showed that property in Independence. Most of those concerns, we believe we've addressed in the PUD. Parking, right now, at 1.5, we'd like to see that go down even further, and I think some of the neighbors would agree with that. You know, if that's something that you all would feel, we could, we could come back with a lower, we'd be happy to provide studies showing how seniors don't require that much parking, and that would allow for more green space and less lighting.
And you're aware you have to keep the fence up, the fence all the way around it is your responsibility?
Correct. And right now, in fact, talking with some of the neighbors this evening, even, a lot of the neighbors on the east side are mowing, just to beautify the area outside of their property. That will now be our responsibility, and we think will be even better than what they've currently got.
Do you intend to put up a wood fence, a stone fence, or what?
We have a, a metal, metal-clad fence with stone columns on the west side, and then also at part near Bass on the east side as well. Is that correct?
The west side is a post, a four-foot, where, where we adjoin Arvis Plaza, is a four-foot. There's already a four- to five-foot cantilever, lower, their site's lower than ours. It's a four-foot called wood stockade.
On the west side, correct.
With steel post, commercial grade. On the north side, where we're along the residential, I don't know if you can think six foot, uh, same, wood fence. And then on the east side, where we're running along beside the houses, from, along the side of the houses, from building line set back to building line set back, would be the wood fence in front, where we're in the right-of-way, we're adjoining it right-of-way. Cherry and Bass, we could have a metal wrought iron style fence that makes it come a little bit more open as you drive down Cherry Bass.
And the, the Cherry Street will not be open into the unit, correct? That's only for fire.
Correct. And then we also have fire lane access and around about, coming along the west side, around to the north.
Yeah.
Uh, there will be no deliveries for any type of commercial kitchen, which we will not have. And these will be meals that would be prepared off-site, and then offered to the residents at a pass-through cost.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we did put delivery hours in there just in case, from 7:00 to 7:00. Something that we felt like the neighbors needed some kind of protection in the future, possibly, depending on what service they may offer.
Yeah, and that, and that plays into the staffing. A, a lot of the questions we had at the neighborhood interact meeting were, you know, how many, how many staff cars are we going to be seeing coming and going at all hours of the night? We have the onsite manager, who typically will live there, and then the leasing agent. The maintenance person's going to be, you know, somebody within the community or Oklahoma City that's going to come over and maintain for us, so.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Davis, sir?
No, I actually do have one, just to go back, just to get this on the record, that is there any avenue to change the ability for younger residents to stay an extended period of time? Is there any way at all that, that these, these rules can be changed?
No, and, and to put it quite simply, we personally guarantee it, the owner guarantees the property. The land use restrictive agreement, which is with the state and with the IRS, we sign. If we ever fall out of compliance for any reason, whether that be allowing folks that are overqualified to live there, that make too much money, or that we aren't tracking their income as they live there correctly on the annual audits, or if we are allowing people under the age restriction to, to live there, that's all documented and has to have proof in the files at all times. If we fall out of compliance, there are significant penalties to where those federal tax credits can be recaptured. So, developers certainly have done it in the past, but that's at their own risk. And that's certainly not something, again, from a marketing perspective, that would help us. There will be plenty of demand based on the market study to lease to independent living seniors, without the need to have to lease to, you know, people that are under the age restriction.
How much of this piece of ground are you buying? Did you go all the way to?
6.7 acres.
So you're not going down behind the shopping center?
No. In fact, right where Bass, it'd be the boundary of Bass.
Bass, okay.
And, and Bass Street, you know, we haven't done all the studies yet, but we believe will actually help with some of the drainage there in the northeast portion of that site, because right now, everything drains that way. But with us being able to come in and improve that area, we think we can pull some of that water away from those, those homes.
You mean to the east?
To the east, to the north and east.
Yeah, we're not going to put any more water down there, are we?
No, he's taking it away from us, is what he's saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, i- in places where this hasn't gone over well, what, like, like Pampa, what's been the, the problem?
Pampa was a unique instance. That was a multifamily application that we submitted, and actually had the high score and received the allocation for the tax credits. The surrounding neighborhood did not want multifamily housing there. The ground was actually zoned, and had been for 30 years for multifamily. And we submitted the application, the state rep at the time in Texas in that region wrote his resolution of support for it. We had the EDC teed up to put in local dollars. City Commission was just awaiting that process, and I went down for a neighborhood interact meeting, and approximately two hundred and fifty people showed up, and this was at a large auditorium. And they opposed it, and they wrote letters and emails and had calls to their state rep, and he rescinded his letter, which isn't allowable. And so, the state told him, you've already written your letter. So, then he indicated that his secretary signed it without his knowledge, which created a chain of events for the city commission to fall back and say, well, if he didn't support it, we're not going to support it. And so, they didn't even make a motion to vote. So, that's what happened in Pampa. That happens to a lot of multifamily tax credit deals. It's not uncommon to see that, when the neighbors say they don't want it. And that's why we do these interact meetings, because we want them to be educated on what it is this property is, what the program is that's financing it, any of their concerns, if it has to do with the site. We get those out of the way early, so that we can work with staff, so that we're not coming in trying to fix it at the last second.
I want a couple of clarifications. This is not an assisted living project.
Correct.
Is there any emergency personnel on premises?
There is not, and that is a liability in this program to have that, because that implies then that you are offering assisted services.
Do you have alarm systems if somebody gets in trouble? Alerts?
We have the standard emergency alarm smoke detectors. We don't have the pull cords. And again, that plays into the liability.
Assistant living.
And when you're marketing these properties, most independent living seniors don't want to see that. They don't want to see assisted-type services. They want to live independently, and, and that's the marketing of this property.
Clarify something that Mr. Taylor asked you. If I'm living there and I have a grandchild that wants to come visit, what's the limitation?
Yeah, it generally takes care of itself in that regard. Most of the time, the grandparents, you know, I can put it this way. We've got, we've got five of these properties, and I have not once in the fifteen years I've been doing this had a complaint that a grandchild was there. In fact, most of the time, there's not enough grandchildren there. They like to see them, they like to interact, but, you know, the one-bedrooms kind of take care of that issue. Now, they will visit, and we encourage them to visit, but extended, you know, overnight stays, in fact, one night even isn't permissible. Not to say that a grandchildren hasn't fallen asleep on the couch and the kid, you know, the mother picked them up the next morning. But the way these properties are designed, sixty-two and older, is the minimum age. The actual age on all of ours averages right around eighty-one. And it's, it's simply because folks are living longer, they're independent longer, they stay in their homes longer. You're not going to see any sixty-two-year-olds in there. You're, you're going to find that the average age is an eighty-one, eighty-two-year-old female, probably about ninety percent of the units.
Is this gated?
No, it is not gated.
We have some people in the audience, would, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Would anybody in the audience care to ask a question or make a comment? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Tom Brentfield, one twenty-three East Bass Avenue, Yukon.
Okay.
I live at block ten, lot one. Block ten, lot two, which is, according to this, is two hundred and forty-three feet of the east side. And that two hundred and forty-three feet encompasses all the timber that is basically left out there. And they're going to drop back twenty feet off of, uh, lot twelve, from Cherry Street, and essentially dropping back along the east side from Cherry over to Bass, that's basically going to wipe out the trees. And they're going to have to go through the effort to do that. I don't see why they can't just go straight down the street to Bass Avenue and leave the timber there. Because it's not going to benefit anybody by cutting it down and replacing it with three-feet trees. We've got, we've got trees over there that's three feet around.
Can you answer that question?
Please step up the mic for the people at home.
We've got an aerial, and maybe we can kind of point out which trees concerned about. Well, I mean, obviously, we're going to try and maintain as many trees as possible.
You don't, you don't have, you don't have answer?
Which?
Right here's your aerial. It actually shows trees. That, this shows the trees you're proposing to plant.
It also has the existing trees on the aerial there.
I, I'm not seeing them, but, uh, this is all new to me. I'm sorry. I've never...
So, we're right here.
Okay.
His house, his property is here, my property is here. There's a big tree right there. There's an evergreen tree on the corner of my, like, right next to my driveway. There's another tree right out here, here, and then he has two right here. They're proposing to drop in this way, twenty feet, which will take out all of those trees in that section. What he's saying is he would prefer if they would go straight down the line, where it wouldn't have to take out any of our existing trees. That would leave at least a twenty-foot cushion between the actual property line and where they begin building up their fence.
Yeah, and part of the problem with her property is, is the drainage. It drains horrendously right now. And it's, it's, it can only get worse. She's got a little berm on her side over there. If they go in there and put this fence in there, they're going to take that out. So, it's just going to drop it even lower.
Well, ma'am, would you tell them your name and address?
My name is Katie Larson. I live at one twenty-two East Cherry Avenue.
Thank you.
I believe that Charlie drew here. This is the actual property line. You'll see that some of these outbuildings are in the easement itself. I assume that the trees that you've drawn on here also include the tree that's actually there.
Well, go ahead.
Correct.
We, we haven't done a survey of the actual existing trees, which we'll do for the final plat, obviously. And I think in the PUD, we've, they kind of, we've kind of addressed that we're supposed to locate existing trees. Obviously, we're going to try and save as many trees, we'll get extra points for that, and, and work around them. There are, there are some encroachments as far as some existing buildings. We're actually trying to work around that, not move those buildings or the existing fence that are actually encroaching onto this property. We'd be working around that.
And that's what I need to hear by showing the fence coming around buildings that are encroaching on.
So, you're, these people, through the course of the years, with no one building up there, have moved over just a little bit into the property?
And maintained them, to some degree, and mowed out to here, which is fine. And we're not saying we want those buildings removed, or we want to put a fence through them. We'll come around them, provided the city's okay with that. Our sixty-foot setback is based on the actual property line.
I see, okay.
In some cases, if we were to come around the outbuilding, which, again, we're okay with, or trees, we would be, you know, maybe that's what, forty-five feet of setback, but we're actually on the property line itself, sixty.
I ask you, Brett, then, if you would go outside of his outbuildings, which that's what I'm seeing here. Could you not just go straight across? Why would you have to come all the way in here?
That would be a staff question. I mean, we would be happy to accommodate.
I mean, I'm new to this whole process, so I don't know anything about this.
Sure.
How to approach any of that.
Well, Mitchell? I think the best way to handle this is to sit down. It doesn't sound like they want to cut down the trees, you know, if they can, and, and they're trying to go, they're trying to give the people the ground that has been poached. So, hopefully, it can be worked out where it's a, a nice resolution for everybody, but...
Is this a, is this a utility easement?
No, what they're on is outside the easement, is what it appears from the plat he showed earlier.
The challenge we will run into will not be from us. It will be because this land is in the legal description. And so, when we record the Lura with the state and the federal department, they're going to say, why are those buildings built on the property?
For title insurance purposes, yeah.
It also could play into densing. We can't drop down below six point seven. So, we'll have to figure out some way where that, it will come up. If you're the underwriting of this deal, sure, if you award the tax credits, because they will ask, what is the exact legal description? And why are you including those buildings?
Okay. Well, that's about the best we can do up here tonight.
Okay, I mean...
The trees and everything.
I would like to, I would like to talk to you more about that.
Yeah.
I, I think there's really only one tree, and I think with, which is this one over here, that possibly, our road's getting kind of close to, whether we can, you know, move it around, work around it. I'll have to do, you know, it'll probably be during design, working with Robbie Williams, as far as putting another bend in Bass Avenue there.
And, and reducing some parking. There's, there's five or six spaces over here that would eliminate a tree. We could drop below the one point five, obviously, but that helps us.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to discuss this item? Please step to the microphone, say your name and address.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and we were late today, but, um...
Your, your last name, please?
Uh, Baz Derrick, and we live at one one four Vine Street, sir.
Vine Street?
Yeah, um, we were just wondering about those, we heard that there was a meeting before this one that we missed, and what was just the, just the paint overview of the whole, is there going to be like a development?
Yes, we've been discussing this since seven o'clock, and we can't start over. But it's a senior living facility of sixty units.
So, are y'all building streets through the, through?
There'll be one street that's, will be added on Bass Avenue, will go down by where Harvest Bank is, that, where it dead ends there.
Will it be affordable senior housing in public?
Yes. Can you say your name, please?
This is Paula Rudell. This is my mother.
Yeah, all the dirt in that hill washes right into our yard.
Well, he's, they've talked about that, and they're going to try to correct some drainage up there also when they build this.
Okay.
On, on ours, in our house, it's like a one bit large alleyway, because we're right behind the corner, very last corner house on that, on Bass Avenue, uh, on the south side of the street.
And we're on Vine.
And, uh, we're at the very corner.
Have diverted their water into our yard.
Okay.
They're, they're complaining about it, too. But my, our house was, they owned it and it was vacant for a long time, so I guess that's, they figured that's what they could do.
Well, if you have questions about the drainage, you can come up to City Hall and speak with staff, or down at the Community Development, and, and meet with the flood control manager down there. Maybe they can answer some of your questions about that. I know we have some drainage issues in the city. They're much better than they used to be, and this gentleman was saying that they're, they're building up there. They plan on trying to take care of some of those issues. He can't, he can't say he's going to take care of all of them, because he doesn't know. But he's going to try to take care of some of them.
When might they start?
If, if approved by the state for the federal tax credits, which would be sometime in November, there would then be about a six-to-eight month underwriting process with home funds, federal tax credits. We would look at breaking ground probably as soon as this time next year, and then a twelve-to-sixteen month construction period.
Is there any way, like, to sign up early?
We actually had a few questions about that at the neighborhood meeting. I think we had a half a dozen or so that actually didn't come just for pizza, but came to find out, is there a way? Yes, there will be. And, and follow along and kind of keep track of the news here. I'm sure you'll know when we get approval, if we get approval, and then we could...
Like a local newspaper?
Yeah, and, yeah, you'll know when we're here, if we...
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any other questions, comments? Would someone care to receive, uh, read the draft motion?
Mr. Chairman, this one point of entry, we need to make sure that nine units per acre is what we have here, and that's what he has in the PUD statement.
Do you want that listed separately?
No, I'm just making note of it.
Okay, that there is only nine units per acre allowed in this PUD. And we have several comments that will need to be listed in the motion. Someone care to read the motion, or are we prepared?
One question for staff on, uh, page two of the actual PUD.
Okay, what's your question?
Under concept, line three, is that fifty yard, fifty feet?
On concept, third line, fifty, a fifty, yeah, it should be a fifty-foot right-of-way.
Okay. Pen and ink that, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask again. Is there, someone care to read the motion?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
In the case of the application for a PUD submitted by Allen Engineering Services, Inc., on behalf of Overland Property Group, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report dated June second, two thousand and fifteen. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following additional conditions. Condition one, the proposed PUD overlay is approved contingent upon the underlying zone change from A agricultural district to R three multifamily district, being approved by city council. Condition two, staff requested revisions noted as numbers nine through twenty-five shall be incorporated into the document prior to the document being forwarded for council considerations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the row, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Item five, to hear a request by Allen Engineering Services for consideration of a preliminary plat for the same piece of ground, six point seventy acres. Tell you the truth, sir, we don't like to do all these on the same night, but with your time consideration, I will allow it. Normally, we would send you out, get all these revisions made, and then bring it back, so that we could see. We're going to trust that Cindy will review all of these prior to the city council meeting, correct? Make sure everything's in there for the council. So, the preliminary plat, on what we've been discussing this evening, does the commissioners have any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a preliminary plat. They will bring in the final plat later on. If you notice the track, it's, it's a large skewed track. They were trying to parcel off the north half, so we required them to do a preliminary plat on the whole thing, because the ordinance requires that. And that also increased their notice of the area, too, as well, so...
Yes. Got several recommendations from staff on, on this also. Mainly language and notices. Do we have any other discussion, or can we go ahead and do the draft motion on this one?
Mr. Chairman, you might see somebody from the audience has any questions about this part of it, too, as well.
Thank you, Mitch. Once again, I will ask anyone, this is just the preliminary plat, and they will have to bring in the final plat before it is finally approved, and you'll have opportunity to speak to it when we all see the final plat. Any questions, sir? Okay, now. I'm sorry, ma'am, would you step to the platform and ask your question? I'm sorry, ma'am, would you step to the platform and ask your question?
We didn't get to see the map. Map? We didn't get a copy of that. You always got to show it again, or?
Well, he'll be glad to help you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion? Guess it's my turn. Hope I got the right word. Property, okay.
Line two.
It's just property.
Yeah, I got that for you guys a little last.
In the case of the application for preliminary plat for the residents at Yukon Hills submitted by Allen Engineering Services on behalf of Overland Property Group, we have read the staff reports and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited by the city, by the city staff report. I move that this item be approved with the following conditions. All staff requested revisions noted in this staff report, items five through nine shall be incorporated into plat design prior to submission of a final plat. Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion by the audience? Call the row, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you all for your information. Any new business come before us this evening?
Mr. Chairman, no new business.
Okay, open discussion. Any of the commissioners have anything they want to talk about? Then our next meeting will be, uh, July the thirteenth. Meeting adjourned.